... private, you know. In the end, on a project that we've already agreed is the project's kind of in a blah, you know, so.
I don't know anything about this stuff, so.
Right.
He's in the design and construction.
We pay him.
We discussed it a long time. We discussed it a long time again yesterday. Larry and I both had to live through both of them.
What's the expression? I'm not used to this. I'm not used to this.
I tried to hold back and let him talk a little bit.
You got a question?
I want to be pushy.
I couldn't remember what's up.
I was going to get down.
What the procedure was?
I guess if you're going to make that comment, you know, you could question their usefulness.
Surely Bob's going to cut these guys.
I can't. We've run a lot of, I've been in a bunch of.
Right.
And I thought we were making it easier. This one, this is another pickup, I guess we still need to make easier because it's not as easy.
Where Betty go?
Betty's being betted.
Oh, that's true.
Well.
Just getting through everything and.
My cold game.
I was going to say, we went too far the record.
I got, I had a 10:30 conference called that. It was not on my calendar as of yesterday. It's now on my calendar. So, should we may end up having.
A little crazy. But anyway, we'll get it done. I said, we'll get it done one way or the other, I guess.
Perfect.
Betty, you ready?
Yes, I am.
Call the commission order, we have your minutes of reports.
Uh, nothing.
Thank you. Announcements of upcoming meetings or events and committee, commissioner committee liaison reports.
Republican club meetings tonight.
Chamber connections is tonight.
Is it?
Guess what's going on though, too? We had Mac board yesterday and the issue with Ivan did come up. He's, his contract's been severed, basically for breach of contract. There was a bunch of them that still supported him, but I think it was a vote of about 34 to 20. And then, uh, the case with the treasurer down there in Morgan County, they, she was asking for some money too, and it got voted down to reimburse her. Basically, I didn't think that was a MAC issue to reimburse her for.
What was she trying to get reimbursed for?
Attorney's fees because Ivan was involved with it and.
Didn't she sue in the commission?
She was, and then she won, and then they appealed it, decided to appeal it by two to one vote, and then, I think instead of keepin' fighting it, she compromised.
Yeah.
Which was her own fault. She should have just kept on going, so.
All right.
But that took forever. I got out of the Campbell meeting thing, goodness.
Yeah.
Was that fun?
No.
Anything to report? I usually don't report much on that.
Debbie?
Just, just so everybody knows, I'll be at FEMA class in Maryland next week, so if you need something, I'll be gone.
Yeah, so.
I don't need that.
Unless there's an emergency of some, unless there's an emergency of some type or another, we will not have a commission meeting next week.
If we can get stuff done, Chris won't be here.
That's right.
He's less known.
Actually, it's a lot more efficient when you're not here.
Your words hurt, Mark.
Truth does once in a while, doesn't it, Jeff?
Hey, that's because you don't have to have as many shiny objects. What were we talking about, anyway?
Hello.
Chris going on vacation.
Squirrel.
Yeah, squirrel.
All right. First item on the agenda is signing of the resolution. Is it resolution or resolutions? I guess one. Uh, approving engagement of professionals regarding the proposed refinancing of our jail bonds, which we talked about before, so this just authorizes us to hire, uh, Joy Howard's firm to do the financial advising and Gilmore and Bell to do the legal work. And we don't pay the legal work unless we close the issue.
So, is there more than one thing that we're approving here?
Yeah, we're, we're approving a resolution which allows me to sign these two documents.
Okay.
So, I entertain a motion to approve the resolution. I guess this will be number one for this year, won't it? We haven't done a resolution. Resolution number one!
Second.
Motion second. Hearing no discussion, call roll, please.
Mark?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Yes. Our roll call vote, those are approved. Next item is bid award 201452 for uniforms. Jennifer?
Yeah, you had the bid tab before you. The recommendations are on the second page. We sort of did a piecemeal with it.
The lowest, lowest bid in the category type of thing?
Yeah, and what they did, we spent certain clothing and talking with Mike, they elected to, to stay with that and not accept the alternates. And so, with that in mind, the recommendations were the lowest in each of the specs.
Okay. I don't have any issue with that.
I'm looking at the, uh, bid tab and just trying to figure out which, which is lowest in each. Who's your recommendation for? Is it different for pants and shirts or?
Yeah, it's on, it's on the second page, so, um, the proper men and women's polo, the southern uniforms, Tri Mountain Polo, JP Promotions.
By my, by my, Chris, what kind of makes this a little different is the, uh, equipment we were awarded via the FEMA grant.
Yeah.
Uh, the extrication gear, gloves and so on and so forth. A lot of the bidders like JP Promotions and the other folks don't have access to that as far as getting gloves or the extrication pants or the helmets or things like that. Banner Fire Equipment is the only one that, uh, rendered a price on the bid there, so that's what's kind of confusing the evaluation is, that, if that makes sense. And Banner Fire is whom, uh, was awarded the, uh, bid with the FEMA grant last year as well.
So, we're going to use several different vendors?
Yes.
Uh, yes. Three.
And they're all okay with that? That's how we bid it?
Yes. It's quite, it's absolutely according to the spec, yes.
Jeff?
There's no deviation from the spec whatsoever.
It's within our budget.
Yes.
And where's it at compared to last year's bids? Are they about the same?
They're about the same, specifically for the high dollar items, the, uh, FEMA grant items that are of the higher cost, they're the same, maybe any difference from last year. Some items may be a little cheaper as well.
I'm good.
Good. I entertain a motion to accept recommendation, award the bid accordingly.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? You don't have contracts, do you?
For those, do we?
No, I don't think so. All those fair, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, motion carries. All right, next item, I gotta get back to my, signing of contract for 2013-50 food thermometers, um, which is awarded to Thermo Works.
We approved that last week.
We did, we just got to approve the contract. So, I entertain a motion to approve the contract.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, call roll, please.
Chris?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, by roll call vote, that contract's approved. Contract 201351 for ambulance maintenance with Al Shepherds Motors, I think this was another one we discussed and approved previously.
Yes.
We need to vote the contract, so I entertain a motion to approve the contract.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, call roll, please.
Hang on just a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, did we talk to Shepherds and they were okay with moving forward? Okay.
Yes.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Call roll.
Mark?
Yes.
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
We need to approve these other two with Gilmore and Bell and WM Financial, because I think the resolution authorized me to do it, so we're past that. 2014-2015 maintenance plan approval?
Assessment maintenance.
I mean, sorry, assessment maintenance plan, do you have that?
Yes. This is the assessment plan.
Have we looked through it?
Yes, I have. Again, it's just like every year, he submits a recommendation, suggestion of a budget.
Does it match our budget?
No, it does not.
Then we don't want to prove it? We need to.
What I have done in the past is submit the actual approval.
Okay.
Again, they go by the approved budget, they don't go by the plan.
So, the plan can change?
Yes, and it's for two years, so yes, it's definitely, it's definitely going to change.
Yeah, I forgot how we did that each time. I thought.
I'd like some more time to take a look at that.
We have to approve this by end of the month?
By February, I don't know, is the first of February or the end of February? I'd have to go back to mine.
Because if we don't approve it, it's automatically approved.
Okay.
Yeah, so I don't know what the, why the state tax commission makes us go through that.
Where does it deviate?
How?
Where does it deviate?
In salaries.
All right, let's, once you take a look at it, and we'll put it on the week after next. I know it's, I know, I know as long as we get done in January, we're okay.
Okay.
So, you're gone next week.
I can take a look at it while I'm gone.
We can do one thing on it, I don't have a problem with that.
I think it'll be, it'll be quick.
Or we can have another date that week. We can do another date that week, too.
Okay, do you want to talk about that right away?
What?
About getting another agenda date set, because we got Chris going to 17th, 20th to 24th, and then the 29th and 30th, you're gone, let's see, 27th to 28th are open, so we could load the 27th down, but Mondays are bad for you.
No, I can do Monday, let me look at that month, let me look at that Monday. Mondays I can generally do as long as we start at 9:30.
Okay, maybe let's do that, start later. We can load down to 27th then, because, uh, I think you're going a week after that then.
I am, I'm going that first week of February.
But I'll be here if we need anything done.
You're the constant.
Might take a little.
You're the rock upon which the commission is found.
I know, y'all can't get rid of me.
Uh, yeah, I can do the 27th. Let's open an agenda on the 27th and start loading it.
Okay.
9:30.
And we can put this on there if you wanted to start it.
That's fine. 9:30. That works for you.
Yep.
Where did Jennifer go? I think when he talked about janitorial supplies too, so.
Do we have anything else that week?
We have the facilities planning discussion on Tuesday, but we wanted to kind of have that as a standalone.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you have a chance to go through accounts payable?
Yes.
I entertain a motion to approve.
I've got a quick question about accounts payable for you. Um, I just wanted to make sure we were okay with the National Association.
I don't have a problem with NACO.
Okay.
We actually get benefits out of that one.
Yeah, and is everybody aware of the, the prescription drug benefits? I mean.
They are, I, I'm depending on the health department to kind of get that worked out.
We used to have cards sitting up here on the counter, too.
Do we still have those?
Because that's available to all Cole County residents, I believe.
I can talk to Ms. Campbell about it and see if we can get some kind of maybe a public notice out or something.
Be good, press release or something.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. What else?
And I just wanted to make sure I did get a bill, uh, from the assessor on the attorney fees.
We said we wouldn't pay attorney's fees for appeal.
Right.
Right.
Pull it out.
Okay.
And then, we talked about that cabinet they got over there and the judges.
This was submitted as a bill for accounts payable, it's a cabinet.
Did you talk to John about that?
Yeah, I told him to talk to y'all about it, too.
I haven't heard anything.
I talked to him briefly, but I don't even want to talk to him further, I mean.
You okay with it?
Well, we pretty much got to pay for it now, but I told him next time it comes up that we want to know about it before he's out spending our money on it. It would have cost about three, four, five grand if we would have added it to Kaufman's bid, I think.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Closer, we did it for 1,600.
I'm okay with paying it, I just wish you would have come ask before he did it.
Oh, we can take it out of the budget somewhere else, a different line.
Pay your venture's money.
What comes out of the budget? That's fine.
I would have been fine getting it if he would have came up here and said, there's no one's going on, I just, we don't like surprises.
Technically, they have their budget, they come out sales tax if we have a budget for that.
Yeah, I, well, they don't have that, I guess.
They do have a budget, but it's small.
Yeah.
That's common.
I'd just soon move on past it and let them know and not do it again in future.
Yeah, I mentioned it.
One more thing, I don't know at this time if you want to, within the accounts payable every month, the first one is the, the UMR bank account allowing me so much money, and I've heard that at the same time.
Okay, how much?
Um, I would say, let's just start at 100, 100,000 each month.
Okay, that's fine.
Unless it comes, I'll come to you after.
Okay, that sounds good.
And if we get behind or something, I'll have a big one.
Do we need, need to put, I guess that'll be in the minutes?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, will you make sure that's included in the minutes?
Along with accounts payable.
Accounts payable, so what I'm going to do is entertain a motion to approve accounts payable, including an authorization for Debbie for up to $100,000 for the UMR insurance.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, motion carries. Discussion on 54 Stadium Boulevard improvement study, are we ready to?
Can I say something?
No? Yeah.
This is your one done?
Yeah.
The, um, the state surplus and the Parks reg.
Oops, I skipped over those two, didn't I?
Yeah.
Sorry. I don't know what the application for state surplus property is. Say something quick.
It's just an application that needs to be signed by you guys, and there's a list of people that are.
That can bid off of it?
So.
All right. I entertain a motion to approve the state surplus application.
So moved.
Second.
Call roll.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Yes.
Roll call vote, that's approved. Sorry, thanks for catching that, by the way, Debbie. Uh, approval of agreement with Parks and Rec, this is the one we talked about before, right? Yes?
Yeah.
You got the agreement?
Yeah.
Well, let's do it.
I moved to sign the agreement with Parks and Rec for the Greenway Trail on Business 50.
Second. Motion second to approve of the agreement with Parks and Rec for the Greenway Trail. Call roll, please.
Mark?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Roll call vote, that's approved. Okay, now let's talk about 54 and Stadium.
Great, I was, I was wondering. Um, the Highway 54 Stadium Boulevard interchange project is a cooperative project with us and the city. City's taking the lead on the design of that. Prior to the design, there's going to be a traffic study. David and Matt can go into detail on the traffic study. Uh, council, I think, is set to approve it next week, maybe.
Yes, Tuesday.
Council meeting.
So, what do you need from us?
Just, um, occurrence with it.
Okay.
You guys can discuss some more detail about it.
Right, it's, the study is, uh, going to be done by George Butler and Associates, actually the same ones that are doing the study over on Edgewood. Um, the project is basically going to include kind of that whole area, uh, the off, on and off ramps off of 54, Jefferson Stadium, Christie, Monroe, um, Tanner Bridge, um, and it's also going to look at, uh, you know, what's going on at the hospital and what might need to be done at Monroe Street in order to facilitate what's happening at the hospital itself. Um, the, uh, the, I think you've got the, the final cost of that project, um, 80% of that is going to be covered by the STP funds that have been allotted for the project, and so, the city-county portion, you know, is 21, 530 essentially for this contract, but it's, it's an hourly not to exceed, um, so if George Butler's done their numbers right, that's, it could potentially be less if they, they get on the ball and get it done. But ultimately, the project is supposed to be complete, um, by May the 30th. Hopefully, we can get some good weather to get our traffic counters out there and get some counts taken, but other than that, uh, they seem relatively short. Get it done by then.
Quicker we move, better, in my book.
We're splitting the cost on the traffic study, too?
We're splitting the cost on the traffic study, um, and as far as construction goes, uh, we had some not-so-good news at the Campbell meeting on Thursday. MoDOT's, although we hadn't yet applied, we were anticipating applying for some cost share funds with MoDOT, but it sounds like those have been pulled for the moment. If the federal highway bill gets reorganized, that, that money could come back. Uh, there was some question about economic development funds, whether or not MoDOT was still going to put those out, but those are potentially funds that we'd be looking for, for construction. And then also, the city is looking to apply, uh, for another grant, um, uh, that could also be used as part of the construction on this project as well, but we're going to, I think, file that, um, on the 15th of March, um, and see what, see if our luck, what our luck is on that. So, there are some additional funds that could be available to fund the construction when that comes around.
That's not the Campbell funds we already had, is it?
No, this would be different.
We do have some in there for.
Right. Addition to. Right, yeah, we had 780,000, I think, in Campbell funds, but this would be additional funds in addition to that.
That scared me there from outside. Because I know one time they said, you know, use your money, you couldn't lose it.
Right.
And we kind of have it marked for, I think that was our intention to market for that, so we don't lose it.
Right, right, and so we'll be spending, you know, 86,000 of STP funds on this traffic study, so then.
Cool.
The MoDOT funds that we're looking to try to acquire or help with this project, are those going to be kind of some of the same funds that maybe we're looking at to do some enhancements?
Lafayette.
Yeah.
Potentially, but not likely.
Yeah, I'm not for sure exactly.
Enhancement money's a different pot, and they're looking at cobbling together across the state to get money for it, so.
Stephen, the only two that I know that have been canceled is the cost share and the economic development.
Okay.
Those two, right now, are on hold.
So, I talked to Dave, um, last Wednesday, and he indicated we just need to move quickly. That's really the, and they need a spread of options on that, so that they can see what they can come up with.
Yeah, Lafayette's going to be this year, starting this year, so it's.
Well, both of these are going to be happening pretty quick, aren't they?
Everything's happening quick.
Lafayette's already.
Right, I mean, I think it's our goal, you know, to get this traffic study done so that we kind of know what the big picture is, and then probably try to focus specifically on Monroe Street and what needs to happen.
Okay.
From the hospital, um, and then potentially, you know, a second phase could be other things at the intersection, you know, kind of depending on, on what the ultimate, you know, you know, full buildout might be.
Okay.
Just need to close those exits and all ramps there.
You need anything else from us, beside from, uh, we're good?
More informative, if anything, you know, just to let you.
We're good.
Good. Thumbs up across the board, thanks for, once again, a great example of working together.
Very good. Yeah, you are.
Um, discuss, next item is discussion of general public welfare budget. I just soon passed that today. We've got more important things to talk about, that's.
Well, they need, I mean, don't they come in and give us a presentation before we issue any kind of check?
Exactly. So. If, if anybody wants money, they need to submit a proposal to us on what they're going to do, and then we can look at the proposals, and if we want them to come in, we can, if we don't, we can just approve them.
So, you got their letters requesting what they want, and you send us through, and if we want them to.
We just need a form letter that goes to each one saying.
You've got several of them, right?
I already sent a letter to them after the budget was approved.
To everybody?
No.
Who did you not send it to?
To the three new ones.
Okay.
Plus, um.
I mean, I think we just need to send a letter to all of them saying, send us what you want to do with this money, proposal, et cetera, and then we will look at it and we'll make a decision whether we want you to come up and present, or whether.
Yeah, for example, Salute to America every year basically uses it for the fireworks. We know what it's going to be used for. I don't need them to come up with a dog and pony show, but we've got a couple of new ones in there that, or even some of them that have been around for a while, arts, you know, they don't do art in the park anymore, are they going to use it for the trucks?
I agree.
So.
Absolutely. I think Debbie was sending out the letters, um, with the amounts on there. Do we need to send out more of a generic letter that has a request, or are we just saying?
They probably need to know what we approved, just for the purpose, you know, they wouldn't, if they submit something that's outside of the budget, we'd say, well, we're technically submitting outside the budget for.
Right.
Just to be clear, I have already sent out most of those letters that were the ones that we.
Just, three you have not.
That's right.
We need to get those three out, and then, let's, as they come in, let's pick them up. I don't, I don't know that we need to have a general discussion of them until we have specific details to talk about. It's kind of my two cents.
I just, you know, I just, I just wanted to kind of talk about those a little more in-depth on what it's going for, what our responsibility is as far as contributing to those organizations, and, um, just making sure that, that it's not, uh, just giving money just to give money and, and make sure that, you know, not, we don't get 20 more coming in.
Right.
In the future that says, hey, we want money, too, so.
Let's see, we can get.
I'll tell you right now, the foster care, that's a new one, and I'd like her to come in.
And I'd like downtown to come in.
Downtown, Thursday Night Live, there's tent on each of those, um.
So.
And then where's the, where's our, where's?
Art's in there somewhere. It didn't change.
City County Art.
Oh, there it is.
But, but, my preference is, I'd like to see the proposals before we even schedule them to come in. I don't want to have them come in and make their proposal, I want to see their proposal and then have them come in and discuss it.
I'm fine with that, too.
That makes it a lot more efficient.
Okay.
Make them fill out a real long application, that way you don't have as many people wanting to.
An impossible application, huh?
All right.
Quit writing that down.
Discussion, discussion of capital improvements, sales tax, which I believe is just the EMS things, right, Debbie?
That's right.
Have we already ordered the two ambulances, right, for this year?
Firm is.
So that's done. Main base expansion, we know where we're at already. Ambulance reporting system and bridge service?
Correct.
Do we appropriate that?
We budgeted for all this. I just wanted people to go out to bid if so needed.
Then I'm okay with it. I mean, some of the stuff we have to bid, some of it, if it's unique and there's no other.
The only one that's unique is gonna be the service bridge system. That's, I don't know, if you call it sole source.
I recall we had a big, long talk about this one, didn't we?
Yeah.
That's right.
Yep.
That's the new state requirements and.
Correct, correct.
Copier, we have to bid.
Yep.
The infusion pumps will have to bid. Mattresses will have to bid and.
Can we, I mean, I'm okay on some of this stuff, but I don't really see a point in ordering mattresses. I mean.
Yeah, I think we should.
We're doing a bump out and.
Those are for the outlying stations and forgive me.
Okay.
Okay.
If I wasn't clear enough on that, that's for the.
Brazito and regional west?
Correct, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
Holy canikies.
Well, I, I hope not, to be conservative and just in case.
And then on the copier and scanner, can we, can we get with all the departments and make sure that we bid all those together? I mean, I don't want, I don't want to bid one copier and scanner for EMS, and then somebody else wants to go out and bid a copier or a scanner. Let's, let's bid them all together and get all the contracts together.
I agree. Let's try.
I think I put one out for the year.
That's not a bad idea, maybe put one out for the year.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
State bid or Whisker or something like that, what you're saying?
Well.
We would do our own bid. What we'd like to try to do is get them all on the same plan, so we have some, same copiers, same maintenance plans, same equipment. Yep.
This ambulance reporting system?
Yep.
What, what is that, Mike?
We, when we render care, we have a documentation of that, and it gets submitted through the state, and then our billing piggybacks off that. There are some changes going on within the state that forces us to make some changes internally, and forgive me, but we had a pretty long discussion in the fall of last year about that. But with the required changes and the, and with the way it's heading, we are gonna be forced, but we're gonna have to go through and change our software.
Okay.
That is the cost, and then the caveat is like with any other software. I know, Mark, you don't like that, and you get that recurring cost each year along with that. But with the changes that are going through the state and HIPAA and all the other reporting type of companies, the state of Missouri is funneling everything to one vendor. And every other service within the state that equalizes that, which they have to, because there's no other, it forces you on that system.
So there's only one software company out there that can do this?
Currently that the state is using, yes. That's image print.
It's kind of, we don't get a real choice on this one. Once again, the state hammers this, is.
They funding it?
No, but if we don't, so we walked through this. They are not funding it. Theoretically, we could say no and make them fund it. But then we're not compliant, we don't work under their ambulance system anymore for reporting requirements, therefore, we would potentially lose our license to be an EMS service.
Yeah.
So yes, we can refuse to do it.
It's kind of like federal funding mandates. If you don't comply, you lose out on, on federal funding, state funding, FEMA stuff, and any grant that we would have a possibility of getting in the future.
Okay, I don't mind, I don't mind bidding it, but I would like to see us maybe move forward with some kind of language in our contracts with software companies. That would require them to bring that service up to our needs and/or refund our money. I mean, I, I'm tired of dealing with these people that promise everything and under-deliver terribly. And then they want to charge us $21,000 a year for support.
I agree. That's excellent. I think whenever we get contracts, vendor contracts, we need to have some language, we insert, some standard language we insert.
Yeah, some kind of performance.
Can you work out some standard language on that? Maybe work with Chris to get the right idea of what we want. Is that okay?
There's something that would refund the entire, any monies that we would pay, just like NetSmart and some of these others that we've had problems with that.
They'll love that.
Yeah, they might not sign it.
Right. I have no question that's an issue. Good?
Yes, sir. Any other questions I'll ask?
I think we're good with it, then.
Well, before you buy anything, we're gonna see it, right? Even the mattresses or pop-up tent for $1,500, I sold about 12 of those together for that price.
If it's a bid, if it's the amount is above, we'll bid it, and it'll come to you just like all the others.
No, I mean, if you're gonna buy a $1,500 tent, I want to see it.
It's a.
I can get you one for $200 at Walmart.
It's not a tent, it's a canvas tent.
Just talk to Jeff about it, show him, give him a picture and show it to him.
I'm, I'm fine with that. I want to see what it's, $1,500, this sucker better be lined with gold.
After we get it or before?
I don't want to get in the weeds here, but doesn't, doesn't emergency management have some type of canvas tent?
They do, but it's of the scale that when you deploy, it takes about 12 people and.
Okay. Good enough.
You're talking about the ones you use for the ballgames, right? You just pop that sucker up, you got a little something to keep you out of weather.
Uh, this is for like the fourth in the fair. It, it is a little larger than a.
Okay, hang on, hang on, hang on. I personally don't care, because I know Jeff's gonna bird dog it and make sure it gets done the right way. So my suggestion is sit down with a book or a magazine or on the internet and look at the pictures, and you guys can figure out how to do it most cost efficiently.
Just email, mail, look at it. I just want to say it's.
Alright, the next item is, is closed session on bids and negotiations, but before we jump into that, Randy, Russ, I'm, hey, I would like your all's input. Is this something we need to negotiate in closed session, or are we better off talking in an open session?
I think it's pretty straightforward, so I mean, you can, I, I think it's up to you.
I mean, we put the closed session on just as a protection, because if we don't have a closed session, we cannot go into closed session. I would.
What's it regarding?
The Lafayette Street enhancement contract.
Oh, okay.
But I don't know that we need to have it in closed session. I just want to.
As long as we're not talking prices, I guess it don't really matter, right? We're not negotiating contract?
Well, we are kind of negotiating a contract, but we don't have to do that in closed session.
Okay.
So that's why I kind of ask you all for your guidance on it, because if we're gonna talk about things that are sensitive or proprietary, particularly from your perspective, Russ, then that probably should be in closed session. On the other hand, if it's gonna be things you don't mind the newspaper writing about, and, and we don't, I don't think we have a concern with that, but I want to.
No, we're, I, I think we're fine.
Okay, then I would just as soon do it in an open session, if that's okay with you guys.
Let's stay in an open session. If we need to go into closed session, we can.
Yeah, if we get to a point where you feel like we need to close it to talk about something, we can stop and close it at that point, if that's okay with you all.
Sure.
So if you come up to the table, we have to use microphones, sorry. Larry, I assume you're gonna stay. Eric.
Larry just likes seeing us bird dogging EMS.
Oh, you drove with Larry, you have to stay, okay.
We have multi-use candy, too.
Have drop-down sides that I can take hunting with me.
K-R-I-S. Alright, well, again, Russ, thanks for coming in. I mean, you know more about this process. You and Randy know more about this process than we do. But obviously, we voted to move forward with your proposal to try to reach an agreement and go forward, because time is, as you heard earlier, of the essence in this matter, we want to move as quickly as possible. So I thank you for coming in on very short notice, and Randy, thank you for coming in and thanks for the help.
Sure.
At the risk of sounding stupid, I think the ball's in your court, because I'm not really sure what we're supposed to do.